I'll call the meeting to order and according to the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 30 dash four dash eighty, South Carolina Code nineteen eighty-seven as amended, all the media in the immediate area have been notified of the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. We'll have our prayer, Mr. Govan, followed by the pledge, Mr. Jeffries.
Well, my ass. Well, once again, we come to say thank you. We thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. We ask our God that you will direct and guide us as we take care of the business that is before us as a relation to the County School District and to save the sons and children of this district. We ask that upon our leaving, you will give us safe travels and return back to our respective home. As we ask in your name, amen.
Amen.
Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It doesn't look like we have any public comments. But tonight, our citizens' comments. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So, now, chairman, prior to approving the agenda, I'd like to make a motion to make one slight change to the agenda.
Okay.
That would be under Section four, letter B, Delta. Remove that award. We'll do that next month.
Second.
Second. Can I get a second for the motion to approve with the amendment?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. With our honors, awards, and recognitions. Chairman.
Yes, I believe we are going to start with Dr. Nichols. Yep, we'll start with Dr. Nichols, who has some All-State Band Awards for us.
Good evening. We have three students from Hartsville High School. Just say, the South Carolina Band Directors Association All-State Band. Those students are Sriji Patel, All-State Clinic Band, Braden Harrington, and Broden Hurd.
We're doing one at a time, so we can get pictures. Come on. There you go.
Did I say your name first?
All right. Does parents want to get a picture? Yeah. Come on, that's fine. You take your time. Congratulations. Okay. How's it going? Good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning. Got it? Okay. All right. Next. I want you to give a congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's make sure we get it. Congratulations. All right. Yes, oh, the band directors, you were supposed to come up with us. Let's get all three. Let's get all three back up. We'll get all three back up. We'll do one big band picture. Let's do that.
Good. Y'all have to try to sneak in with your... And then stay in there because...
Yep. We'll crowd in. We'll get y'all. Crowd in. Here we go. This is the one where I'm always in front. Everybody's tall as me. All right.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. All right. The Darlington High School Marching Band has won the South Carolina Band Directors Association twenty twenty-five Traditional High Step Marching Competition, Class One A, Two A. This is the first time that Darlington County School District Band has earned this prestigious award. The band is directed by Dr. Brennan Johnson, Director of Bands. Joining Dr. Johnson to accept the award on the behalf of Darlington School, High School Marching Band are Jeremiah Isgit, Tromone Section Leader, Cameron English, Drum Major, and Jaden Blackstock, Drum Major.
Drum major. Just a few years ago.
Thank you.
All right. Great job. And then we have some athletic...
All right.
We have some athletic awards. Mr. Schuler is going to take the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. I have the privilege and honor to recognize four Hartsville High student athletes. They are Hartsville High School Weightlifters who earned spots on the South Carolina High School Strength Coaches Association, the twenty twenty-five pound metal power clean All-State team. First, we have Alviana Waiters, power clean All-State, head coach, Brandon Tetter, Athletic Director Brad Wu, and Principal Cory Lewis.
Congratulations. Do you get yours? Right here.
Next, we have Dominique Rambowens, the two hundred and twenty-five pound division.
He's not here.
All right. Next, we have Franklin Davis Peterson, the two hundred and sixty pound division. Come on down.
Congratulations. Can you guys look at me just for a second?
Yeah, I'll say it's better than pencil and paper. It's a lot quicker to type and it's a lot quicker to reach out to our teachers better. Like if I need help in an assignment at home, I can email her or screenshot my work and send it to her. She'll email me back the correct way to do it. So, I think technology is a great thing. Depends on how you use it.
So, we also had our last, like, we wrapped up about artificial intelligence and so we started having those conversations too, because our teachers are all working on artificial intelligence. But the next step is how do we utilize that in classroom? So, that was a really good conversation too.
I bet that was good.
Yep.
And our award winners, if y'all, if y'all need to leave right now, we'll pause a minute while y'all, you're welcome to stay.
Parents and award winners, we know it's a school night and everybody wants to get back and get to their studies, so we'll give you a second.
We've got minutes for the February tenth and February twenty-fourth meetings. You want to take those together? I'll take a motion to approve those.
Okay, I will be except both of them.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Our next Board of Education Work Session will be Monday, March the twenty-fourth at six o'clock here in the Training Room. And our next regular meeting will be April fourteenth, also here in the Administrative Training Room.
But maybe in a larger room.
But we may be in a larger room, just depending on...
How many awards?
Stay tuned for location. But that's the date. The date won't change. Needing adult education admissions. Can I get a motion to approve our adult education admission?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And that moves on to our reports and presentations. Dr. Newman, one I'm looking very much forward to tonight.
Absolutely. So, we have our Student Leadership Counsel, Advisory Council. I'm gonna walk over this mic.
So, this is our, we had our second High School Leadership Advisory Council meeting a few weeks ago, and I have a couple representatives here tonight to talk to the board about some of the things that we talked about. I have Ann Lee from Mayo High School, and I have Sean Odom from Darlington High School. We had the bug hit a couple folks, and so we've got some fill-ins and a couple folks not here that were gonna be here because of all the bugs that are going. You know, it's a time of year, so... But anyways, I'm glad we have Ann and Sean. Come on up. Come on up and hang out with me for a second. All right. So, what we talked about at the last meeting, first of all, we did address the safety and security and to see if there had been some changes that had been seen since the last time. And of course, I think, Ann, we were talking about on your campus that there was some, there was more fencing, there were a couple more doors that had the actual card access to it now, and that you all had seen some work done. And then, Sean, with your group, we were talking about that I think there had been a change in the morning when students get to school, that they, there's a different way. So, we have folks that are going through the weapons detectors and all that. And so, we talked about it at Hartsville High School as well, that was part of it. And Lamar didn't, if you don't remember from the last time around, Lamar didn't have as many concerns at the time, but there are things that are going on all four high schools. So, we kind of reviewed what we had last time. But then, the challenge for this meeting was, we talked about technology, and we talked about some of the challenges that you all face, and we talked a little bit about, you know, some of the things, you know, for example, we have to, federal law requires us to monitor, you know, what comes in on certain websites. It's a federal law to be able to do that. But also, I think you all had a chance to talk to some of your peers about challenges with technology, but also some solutions. And so, I'm gonna turn the mic over, and I'll turn over to you, and let you talk about what we talked about earlier.
So, many of my peers and I, we all agree that our biggest issue is having websites blocked, especially at home, and this prevents us from doing our homework mostly. And a solution that my principal and I came up with is having a form similar to what teachers have, where we can submit a website and explain why we want it unblocked, and so people can review it instead of just having it permanently blocked.
And I would just like to reiterate what she said, because this week, Read Theory was blocked.
Which one's...
And for Read Theory, it's a reading website, and I talked to the academic coaches, and they actually use that information for their students, but the students couldn't get on it because it was saying that this site was blocked, it was not appropriate. And graphic calculators and stuff like that, that helps us with our day-to-day education, those sites are being blocked. And what I've really gotten from students here at the high schools is that they feel like they're not being heard. They feel like that they're not importing, being included in the process, in their education process. So, I would just ask that maybe sign an email or something to ask what would they like to have unblocked. Of course, you would get ridiculous responses.
I love honesty.
But some of these responses might be helpful in a way.
Yeah, good. Very good. All right.
Question, Dr. Newman?
Yes.
Is the block due to us, or is the block due to C.R.A. or T. Typical race theory. Are they being blocked because...
No, no, it's all technical. It's strictly technical. So, the blocks are coming from, websites have to be vetted, and so, there's a process like what Ann was talking about, teachers, that teachers can have, they can request something to be unblocked, and they can say why, and then our Technology Department can look at that and decide if it's safe. But there's a lot of, our students with us tonight do, you know, lots of positive things with those websites, but some of the websites don't have good stuff on them. And by law, by federal law, we have to block those. So, you wind up, you know, being overly protective to make sure bad stuff doesn't get in versus not being protective enough. And that's one of the things that we were all talking about in our meetings, is that, like YouTube, for example, right? So, there's a lot of good uses for YouTube, but you also know you can access a lot of bad stuff on YouTube. And so, how do you limit the bad stuff for the good stuff? So, those are, Mr. Govan, those are the things that we try to work through, but if there are certain sites, like the one we were just talking about now, it's pretty much just, we had a way to submit it, what they call whitelist it, which would allow it. But yeah, there's just a lot that goes into, you are fully aware of all the cybersecurity stuff that we've been going through as a district. Part of that is to protect the bad stuff from getting in and shutting our district down. So, it's like this very fine balance between giving everybody access for what we need, but at the same time, protecting us from a security.
Got a question. Something was said about the teacher using it for assignments, but they couldn't get in it. So, why would the teacher use that if the students don't have access to it?
Yeah, and again, there's certain software that just teachers have access to, that students may not. But then also, if there is a software or a website that the teacher says, hey, like they assign the students to go there, then we certainly would want to be able to figure out how to get the students to have access to it, right? So, part of that also is a teacher, like, teachers may not realize it's blocked for students, but it's open for them. And that sounds like kind of what we ran into with this situation. Very much reconcilable, but at the moment, right, if I'm standing in front of a class and I say, go to this site, and I'm the only one that can get into it, that could be a dilemma.
So, one comment or request is that, I hear this from my students in our high schools, my daughter's a senior, my son's in college now, but I heard this all through high school, and that sometimes it was very random, like, they would be able to not get in it one day and get it in the other day, or if they were fresh enough times, it would finally come through. So, I would just challenge our Technology Department to look in that, because it's, I don't think it's a hundred percent just what we're blocking and what we're not blocking. Like, I think there may be some other challenges, because for sure, it seems random, and like, they were able to get into it yesterday, and then now they can't. Lot of that kind of stuff is what I've heard as a parent complaining coming from my kids. That's just my own personal example, but I just wonder if it's a little more than just what we're blocking and what we're not. Or maybe, I don't, I'm not a technology person. How the system works, maybe sometimes it's catching something and not another time it doesn't get, it gets through the net, and other times it's being caught by the filters, so I don't know. But the, so basically, what you're saying, though, is that we're filtering, probably a lot of stuff's automatic, right? Like, it's, there's, there's systems that are screening things, but you're saying that we could allow the person to actually review what the system has already removed and decide whether or not it would be hit with...
That's right. So, there's something called whitelisting, you know, websites. And it's just, again, somebody being able to put their eyes on it, make sure that it meets all the, you know, requirements for us to have our students on. Because again, a lot of websites are asking our students for information, right? And we don't want, we don't want you all to have to give up your information to people who may want to do something with it that you don't know about, right? So, it's always making sure the balance, the security and safety piece, but I know it's frustrating. The same thing happens with me. Like, I've, several times, I've gone to give a presentation and a website's blocked. I gotta call somebody, so. So, it even happens to the superintendent, but it's just trying to find that balance. But I think we would all agree, it's challenging. It is. And...
So, are we talking about setting up a portal for students to be able to request certain sites to be open, or what?
So, we're having conversations about what is the best way? Is that a portal?
Right.
Is it a form? Is it an email? What would that look like? Is there somebody at the school that these can get to and then get fumbled? We're having those conversations. Hopefully, the next time, kind of like the safety and security thing, we'll have some answers about how we resolve some of this at the next meeting.
What's there? Anybody else have any questions for us, students? Thank y'all so much for coming. I can't tell you. Oh, you got some more for us. All right, go ahead. Sorry.
One thing I would like to add is that these websites mostly are safe. You can access them during the day at school, but when we get home, is the day's problem.
That's right. That's another one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's an odd one that we've talked about. So, they can access them here, but when they get home, they can't access them because they're off of our network, right? They're off of our, so it kind of gets outside of our fence, so to speak. Remember, we were talking about that, that that's kind of the reverse of what we've been talking about.
Is there a solution for that?
Yeah, I mean, that's a pretty easy one, as far as, again, I think it's more the, our computers connect to our network, and when they're on-site here, you know, it sees everything, certain numbers, certain IP addresses and everything, and when you're at home, it's off of our network, so it could be on their own home wireless network, and so, it may be doing something different with it then. Yeah, we can reconcile that.
Is that, was that your main feedback about technology that you guys gave? I mean, was there anything else positive? Like, is there anything that you particularly are happy with? Are you, do you like your MacBooks? Are you pretty happy with the way they...
They run very fast, I will say that. Very good. Yeah.
Yeah, I say it's better than pencil and paper. It's a lot quicker to type, and it's a lot quicker to reach out to our teachers better. Like, if I need help in an assignment at home, I can email her or screenshot my work and send it to her. She'll email me back the correct way to do it. So, I, it's, technology's a great thing, depends on how you use it.
So, we also had, our last, like, we wrapped up about artificial intelligence, and so we started having those conversations too, because our teachers are all working on artificial intelligence, but the next step is how do we utilize that in classroom? So, that was a really good conversation too.
I bet that was good.
Yep.
My, my social studies teacher wanted me to shout her out. Dr. Knight, she, she started using AI assistance for us to use our, to do our assignments, and that's really helpful. I feel like I'm learning a lot through that.
Yeah, that'll be the next level of conversation, is how we can responsibly have students using it, so that's awesome. Thank you.
Anything else, guys?
Great job. Thank you all.
Thank you again. I'm sorry your peers were ill, because this is really a highlight. We started this year, and it's something we're looking, you know, we've been doing quarterly, and I just, it's a, we appreciate y'all coming in. And if you want to leave now, you are, you are welcome to. We'll give you a couple minutes before the end of the stage, watching us out, so. All right, and that leads us to where we've got our construction update.
Yes, so, we actually have Joel Carter, Prochempa Carter Sees, and Bart Sees, who's no relation to that Sees, but from EdCon Construction Company, to give us an update on our new elementary school and the Blue Street project, so.
Thank you, members of the chair, members of the board. We are excited to be here. We've got some very good views on a few things for projects that we did have, we're working on. We have a certificate of occupancy for the greenhouse at the Darlington County Institute of Technology. We also got a certificate of occupancy for the toilets there at, in Storage Building there at Lamar. So, we are fully occupied there, so a lot of good things. And the new Black Creek Elementary School. There we go. So, just, these photos actually are about two weeks old, and the reason for that is because last week, when we were here, it was raining, and so, we're gonna look at a few of them. But anyway, you can see front of the school, and looking at it, we have a lot more roof on now. We also have gravel down the parking lots, et cetera. So, we can go to the next slide. And on the next slide, you know, just another look there, we're actually looking in the lower right-hand side at the kindergarten wing, the first grade, and then, of course, the entry's in the center there, and then back behind that is the courtyard, play areas, et cetera. Looking back at the service area for the kitchen, the kitchen's kind of in the foreground, and you can see the drive starting to take shape around the school. There's a bus drive at the, on the far left side for the kindergarten wing, and those elementary students there. And then, this one was taken last week in the rain, and you can see the water there, but this is the front entry of the school. Now, you can start to see how the colors are taking shape. You can also see the roof that is on the building now, which is much different than what we're looking at from two weeks ago. So, we're moving along very good with this. This is actually the bus entry, bus drop-off there at classrooms, and again, this is from two weeks ago. And now, we move to the inside, so we've got ceilings going in. You can see a little bit of casework in this particular picture that's going in. We have, our building is energized now. We have power on the building, and we're starting the, I'll let Bart talk about that, but we'll be starting unit startup this week. And then, as you can see, the floor tile is going down in the kitchen area, so a lot of things are happening. Wall tile, this is kind of interesting, and our interiors department worked with the district on color schemes, and you can kind of see these colors starting to take shape, and it will make sense ultimately. And then, as mentioned, casework is going in. This is actually the art room area. Another shot from the courtyard, we're actually looking at the media center entry from the courtyard here, playground area, and playground is secure with fencing. And flipping over to Blue Street, the, what appears to be kind of a runway right in the center, that's actually the tennis courts. And this is also an older picture. Y'all noticed today, it was raining a little bit, but, so, we've got the recreational fields are kind of in, on, in the foreground on this side, and then the baseball field is at the top with the green, that kind of looks yellow, but anyway. Another look, softball field on the left side, baseball field's kind of in the center there. And then, looking at the press boxes from the field side, this again is from a couple of weeks ago, but still, this is starting to really take shape. We have, our building is energized now. We have power on the building. And we're starting the, I'll let Bart talk about that, but we'll be starting unit startup this week. And then, as you can see, the floor tile is going down in the kitchen area. So a lot of things are happening. Wall tile, this is kind of interesting. And our interiors department worked with the district on, on color schemes. And you can kind of see these colors starting to take shape. And it will make sense ultimately. And then, as mentioned, casework is going in. This is actually the art room area. Another shot from the courtyard. We're actually looking at the media center entry from the courtyard here, playground area. And playground is secure with fencing. And then flipping over to Blue Street, the, what appears to be kind of a runway right in the center. That's actually the tennis courts. And, and this is also an older picture. If y'all noticed today, it was raining a little bit. But, so we've got the, the recreational fields are kind of in, on, in the foreground on this side. And then the baseball field is at the top with the green that kind of looks yellow. But anyway. Another, another look softball field on the left side, baseball field's kind of in the center there. And then looking at the press boxes from the field side, this again is from a couple of weeks ago. But still, this is starting to really take shape. They had some scrimmages out there on the field. You can see the netting there for the baseball field too. Another shot there of the concessions and also press box for the baseball. I failed to mention on previous photo, the, the parking lot is in, in strike. So it's being used. And then again, there's, that's on the right-hand side, just beyond the fence. Just the entry into the press box at the top. And you can see the dugouts. A view from the stands, this is kind of a fisheye. It's a little weird looking because this is a fisheye type look. It's much more open than this. But you can see the ball field there taking shape for the infield there. And the scoreboard. Scoreboard is lit up. We are, we are using it, so it's working well. And dugouts, showing the dugouts there, you can obviously see the grass is green and looks great. Banning cages. Banning cages now, we actually have a structure over the top of this now. So that is moving along. The banning cages are not, we had disassembled those to build the, the structure. So the structure is up at this point in time. I believe that's what we have. And I'm going to let Bart talk and give us an update on the schedule.
All right. So we'll stick with Blue Street for now. As, as Joel said, the, the high school field is finished, complete. They've been playing on those fields, practicing and whatnot. I believe the first game is tomorrow. We'll see whether that happens or not. Might be a little too wet down there today. But we are ready to go. The concession stand is, is operational. The toilets are ready to go. We passed inspection on that. So it's, it's good to go. As Joel said, the parking lot is now paved. If you haven't been over there, so. Really excited about how, how it turned out. I think it's going to be a great addition to, to the district. And so that's, that's moving on well. The, the rec side, which is what we've been calling the other field, is a partnership you guys have come in together, which is really cool to be a part of with you guys and the city teaming together to do this. But those fields are quickly moving in, in that direction as well. We've been approved to turn power on. Duke was supposed to be there today to energize that building. They did not make it due to the weather, so we expect them in the next day or so. We were also supposed to start striping of the tennis court today. And that obviously didn't happen. But probably a couple of days to get it dry. And so we should start, start striping that relatively soon, I would think, middle of the week. So in a couple of weeks, the tennis courts will be finished and will be, be ready to be, be played on. And the same thing with the, the rec field concession stand and the fields themselves. They'll be ready to go. And, and I believe they're not planning on taking use of those fields till sometime in early April. I'm not sure the exact schedule with that. But, so that, that kind of covers everything there. Any particular questions about Blue Street before I bounce back to Black Creek?
When the other recreational fields, when will they be done?
They'll be, will be finished and, and we should have a final inspection sometime first of next week. And we'll be pretty well done with that. From the city side, I don't think they're planning on using them until, like I said, sometime first part of April, from what we, we understood. I don't know exactly what their plans are, but.
They've been practicing though. On those fields, they have.
Have they have been? I was trying to figure out when their season's, or.
I mean, I know.
April, early, I think the first week of April for games.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we, we didn't do anything to the fields proper. We just basically, the fields stayed exactly where they were. We just removed the old fencing, removed the old lights, put new fencing, new lights and new dugouts. And then build a, a central concession stand. Okie dokie. Then we'll roll back over to Black Creek. As Joel said, things are moving really well. We're, we're just clicking right along. The, the outside is really coming together. If you were to go over there, there's stone on the bus parking lot. There's stone on the front parking lot. There's stone on the bus drives all the way out to Levensworth. So the, the exterior is coming together nicely. We've pretty well finished. The, the brick has been finished for a while. The, the roofer, he's moving on every, every day that's nice. He's got eight or nine guys out there putting the roof on. We're already in the dry. We've got, so that's not an issue. This is just the final, the final coating, the metal itself, final product. But, so the outside's moving on well. As Joel said, we got power last week. We'll start the rooftop units in the cafeteria and kitchen area later this week. And the classroom units will start next week. So we'll start getting conditioned spaces in there moving forward. I think we're well on schedule for completion sometime in May is our goal and what we're aiming for. We feel very confident about that. And that will give, give the district a good opportunity to get things moved in, get settled in and take, take a great ownership of this project, which we're, we're excited to be part, part of with you guys. Any other questions about Black Creek?
I'm, we're on schedule or ahead of schedule. I mean, I, it looked, I don't want to criticize, but I mean, it looks great.
And the furniture's ordered and everything, right? Furniture, playground equipment.
So playground equipment has been ordered. That's supposed to be coming in, I believe, the first week of April.
Yeah, sometime month of April, the playground.
And then they're working on the pricing of the furniture now. We've got all the order together. And so we're just working on the, on the pricing of it to be able to hit the go button on that as well.
Great. And I think we're looking forward to you guys coming for our work session as we kind of move on to our next projects that we are anxious about, but eager to, to move on. I mean, there's a lot of good momentum with, I mean, I think we've done some great work with the buildings here in the district. And I just look forward to our next steps, which we're going to start diving in with you guys in March.
So the next step, will you have some pricing on that also? We will. We're working on that and working through that process now. Okay.
Because that might be the facility study or other capital projects or what?
Based off the facility study.
That's right. Based off the facility study.
That's my presumption.
You've got some priorities. You prioritize what you think should be.
First to, right?
We do, that's right. So we'll, we'll have, we'll have those priorities in, in format that we can go over. It may be that you say, hey, we think this needs to occur before this does. This will work through that too. You know, this is, you know, again.
But this is building on the information that you gave us in December.
That's correct.
Yeah, I, I think it's great that, again, we're able to kind of look at the next, hopefully five, 10, 15, 20 years for all the buildings that we currently have in the Darlington County School District and what the, what the potential plans are that you all, that you've presented once already, but now we're just kind of digging farther into that for us to move forward with.
And as these bonds are paid off, we will probably be looking for a new bond referendum in the future, I would assume, right?
It, it depends on how much you would like to get done at one time. But I think that's a fair question that's on the table. You know, we, we know we have some, some needs that we have to look at. And so how to finance those needs, that's part of that process is, you know, five years, 10 years, 20 years, what does that look like? And how can we do the financing for that over time that is most efficient with the taxpayers' money?
So, because it's been a while. So just as a reminder, the brand new elementary school, we did not go to taxpayers' traditional money.
Yeah, we did not.
That is a.
Money that we had.
We don't have, we emptied that piggy bank. That piggy bank's empty.
The board did an excellent job with, you know, efficient use of funds to where, you know, this was funded with no taxpayer money as far as what was, you know, what we had been able to, and what the board had been able to efficiently accumulate, so.
Any other questions? Any make any questions? Thank you all so much. We'll see, we'll see you as we dig in in March. Thank you.
What was that date again, Bart? What was that date again?
May.
Just checking.
And that leads us to our budget report. Ms. Douglas.
The January reports that you were saying now include the bulk of our tax revenues. So they look a lot better. You can see on the comparison from prior year to current year that our tax revenues are up about 10%, which is, which is good considering our ADM numbers. Did anybody have any questions on the reports? I mean, they're, they're, they're pretty standard other than the, the revenues came in a little higher than we anticipated, which is a good thing. We discussed at board work session that we started the budget process for next year. We've already met with all of our principals, our senior leadership team, directors, we've gathered information. HR's been working on the staffing allocations based on projected student enrollment. So we'll use those numbers to pull salaries in range. And then when the 135-day ADM counts come out, I think the end of next week, but in the next two weeks, we'll use that to calculate our projected supply funds and supplements and allocations, allocations. And then we'll kind of see where we stand. We went to the school board, the school board officials conference this past week. And we were told by the state department that we should receive projected revenues based on the House Ways and Means Committee budget meetings this week. Right now, the House is meeting this week. And then next week, the Senate will meet. And then the following week, they'll send it to a subcommittee. So we won't know anything, but at least when we get the revenue projections this week on the House Ways and Means, we'll have version one of meaning probably to come. The Ways and Means Committee proposed the $1,500 salary increase to teachers. We were told that it's for every cell, but we were also told they're eliminating one of the, or they proposed eliminating the bachelor's plus 18. And they don't really have a plan on how they're going to do that. So that brings some issues they're working through. And, and we were, you know, we've also told about the employee insurance increase of about $441 per person for the year. So the $1,500 increase looks substantially less when you tack on $441 of additional insurance. And all this is subject to change, but right now that's, they're pretty steady on the 1,500. And then we'll see where we stand and then we'll make a decision on what we do. And right now, we just wait and see what the legislators come up with. We had a real good meeting, got some good information. And they're asking a lot of questions. State department didn't have a lot of answers, but we made a lot of questions and they said they'd get back to us. So we're making progress. Anybody got any questions?
I just got a quick one. On the fee and lieu, how are we so under budget on that, our revenue side?
Well, that really is, is like a, like a lopsom.
I mean, do we kind of not know the fee and lieu prior, or?
Yeah, we look at that and hopefully this time, and it's gone up and down. I've got like a projection over 15 years and you would think that it would stay pretty steady.
Yeah.
But it, it hasn't. So what I need to do is find out from the county what was added last year that wasn't on the tax bills. And of course, we, they did the reassessment. And they did the reassessment before, I mean, after I did the budget. So we didn't get the reassessed tax values until September. And so that probably has something to do with it. But we're going to look at that before we do the projections for this year.
That just number just seemed off.
Yeah, yeah, it is. And it's, you know, delinquent taxes, you can't ever, they're close right now. In some years, we get two or three million and some years we get half a million. You know, that's kind of hard to, but the fee and lieu, we should be able to come closer. But I just need to get some more intel from them. I am assuming it has something to do with the reassessed values.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you so much. All right. We have our new math textbooks and resources adoption.
Yep, this will be Dr. Nichols.
Yeah, I just come up to him.
I meant to print this out for you all. I didn't, but I can print it out afterwards. Dr. Rivers, who is our director of math and science, he worked with, not our director or coordinator, excuse me, he worked with our coordinating teachers. He's been working with them all here with the new math standards. So this started before the textbooks actually, we rolled and knew what we were going to have. They reviewed the South Carolina Department of Education highly, well, high-quality instructional materials. HQIM is a new acronym for us, starting in January, because that's when the state department actually released the list to us. And then, so the CTEs and Dr. Rivers worked together to look through those materials, put them against the state standards, the new state standards, and to start looking at which ones fit the standards better and which ones others. In order to get on that list, they have to meet 80% of our state standards. So you can't just get on the high-qualified instructional material list if you're not meeting at least 80% of our standards. Once that occurred, then they had what they called the textbook caravan, and that was in February. And we encouraged administrators, coordinating teachers, teachers, the curriculum instruction staff, so Dr. Ford, our secondary director, Ms. Sweeney, our director of elementary, Ms. Lane, our lady MTSS coordinator, coordinator, teacher came. We had Mr. Scaris from technology, because there's all these back-ends to textbooks now that deal with technology. It's not just about the book anymore. And so we had a variety of people attend. I think we did about 30 between Florence Caravan and our, the caravan over in Columbia. So that was a really great opportunity for them. And I think they got a lot of good, rich materials and questions answered before they went back to their shafts. So then they went back to their schools and their directive, there was a, a rubric that was created. And it mimicked the one that the state department used, using the high-quality instructional materials. And they were to go through with each grade level, with each of the textbooks. Some grade levels had two, some had three, some had five. So there's, it was interesting. There were less choices in high school mainly because South Carolina changed the standards and some of the textbook companies could not catch up as quickly than there were in elementary or middle school. So they went through, each grade level did their rubric. They came to a consensus. And then they came to a consensus with their grade level shares of which book, textbook they thought would be best. Those were shared back with Dr. Rivers or myself. And then from there, we took, you know, the scores and figured out from the top two from each school which would meet the needs and fit what the teachers asked for using the rubric. So in K5, they went with the Curriculum Associates Class, daily classroom math. In 68, they went with McGraw-Hill, which is set by South Carolina reveal. Part of the reason they chose that one is that it has an eighth grade geometry that has our eighth grade standards already wrapped into it into one book. They were the only text company that had that. So that kind of gives them two books in one. And the teachers found that to be very helpful as it related to that geometry, Algebra 1, Algebra 2. In high school, the geometry book was Estatus, the Algebra 2 was Estatus as a company, and then Algebra 1 plus Math Nation. They felt like out of all the books and all the standards that we had, that those books covered the standards the best for our teachers and provided them with the resources and materials that they needed. All of the textbook companies will do one day in-person training. So we will get that from all of them. And then after that, it usually comes at some sort of fee or it's a virtual training. Each of these comes with different, some come with manipulatives, some come with extra things for the computer and teachers. So they all have their choices and their reasons for picking those. But most of all, I can thoroughly tell you, they went through each one of the standards with each one of these books and looked through them to make sure that they fit the standards to the closely as possible to our state standards so that our students have the best opportunity for success.
Is the sequencing in the books the same as the pacing guides that we use?
You mean like, does it go page one to page 180? No. Because the standards aren't taught like that. So the textbooks go that way. I remember being in math and the teacher having to pull from like one chapter and just like, I forget, I remember this chapter to get that. That, that still exists to some extent. That, that still exists to some extent. The ready curriculum is a little bit different, because a lot of it is computerized, and they can get it together, and so it kind of flows better. But no, it doesn't flow, just because textbooks aren't written just for our state. They're written, yeah. So you're going to get 80% of our, our standards, but then the teachers are going to have to know with our pacing guides, where does that 20% fit in? And that's where these CTEs and Dr. Rivers have to know, okay, it covers the standard, but it only covers it at this depth. We've got to have it to this depth. So we're going to have to, you know, plug in some places. But an 80/20 rule is a good way to look at textbooks. You're going to get 80% of what you need, you're going to have 20% where you're going to need the teachers to have some assistance and knowledge and look into those other materials, supplemental, supplemental materials.
Anybody else have any questions?
Can we get a motion to approve these textbooks?
Hi, yeah. So make a motion that we approve, I guess, are we approving the purchase? The, just?
The adoption.
Adoption.
The adoption, okay. Make a motion that we approve.
We don't purchase these.
Okay, to approve the adoption of these new textbooks.
All in favor? Anyone opposed?
Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Nichols. Dr. Newman, you want to carry on with our superintendent's update?
Madam Chair, members of the board, members of our audience, in person and online. Just a couple items I'd like to mention before I get into our strategic plan goal areas. We have our art and business program this coming Sunday at Hartsfield Middle School. This is an annual event where we get a chance to showcase all of the great talent and artists across the school district. The actual gallery will be open from 3:00 to 5:00 at Hartsfield Middle School, so anybody can come through between 3:00 and 5:00 and look at all the artwork that's there. And then the, the actual ceremony will be at 3:30, and that's where they will have the awards given out for the different artists themselves. But just an incredible array of whether it be drawings, paintings, sculpture, just all kinds of different, you know, ways of how our students show the talents they have. And our art teachers obviously are very big in putting this together and helping us put this together. So encourage everybody that can to be able to come by and take a look at the artwork in the district, Sunday, Hartsfield Middle School, 3:00 to 5:00, ceremony at 3:30. We have our Random Act of Kindness Day, or this is the third Random Act of Kindness Day. It's March 29th, Saturday, March 29th. I will get a schedule together for the board of the different events that are going on across the district. But we have been focused on one day, that one day, for the past two years. And this year, we kind of opened it up, March is Random, March is Kindness Month. And so there are some schools that may have changed their day, that they're doing a big event with all of their faculty, and the middles and the high school students are using students for that. But then also, every school in the district on the 29th will be making a donation to local charities, food banks, Carolina Kids Clothing, you know, Soup Kitchen. So every one of our schools across the district will actually be going and giving something on that day. And then many of our schools on that day will have events. Typically, they're 9 to 12, 10 to 1, where they, you know, they may be going out into the community and cleaning up, they may be handing out water at grocery stores, they may be cooking hot dogs and hamburgers for people, they may be, you know, collecting items that day, actually, to be able to help with. So again, I'll have a schedule out, but this is a great chance for the Darlington County community to see our schools give back, and really, our students give back, and see what that is, what that means to be able to give. And it's been a great event the past two years, and looking forward to this year. I'm hoping the weather today is not what we have, and the weather that we have later on this week, which I think it's supposed to be upper 70s and close to 80 later this week. That's what we're hoping for, sunny and 80 on that day. Because we have had weather like today on some of those events, but looking forward to that. As you heard, our architects and construction folks talk about the Blue Street collaboration with the city of Darlington tomorrow. We're hoping we can play a baseball game. It depends on how it gets dried out, I think. Ms. Gurke, are we, we're hoping that?
We need it to get really sunny tomorrow.
That's right. I think it's supposed to get really windy tonight, which will be helpful. So if it's windy and cold tonight, hopefully by tomorrow night at 5:30, we'll be able to be on the field. And all of our board members, obviously, are invited to that for a first pitch. All I can say is, I mean, wow, the stadium is incredible. I know our baseball players are going to be really excited to be able to play on that. I've heard from, for years, Ms. Kelly, about the old stadium, and many things about the old stadium. And so it is, I know it's exciting for everybody that's been in the Darlington community to, to see a new baseball stadium. So first pitch tomorrow. And then also, in April, the city is hosting a ribbon cutting for the rec department part of the Blue Street complex. And April 12th, so that's, I think that's a big jamboree for baseball games that they have for the rec league. They're going to have a live band out there, and of course, food and everything, because they have their concession stand and bathrooms that are new as well. But it's really an impressive facility when you look at, you know, what it's offering, all of our students in the Darlington area, from elementary school all the way through high school graduation. So we're excited about this. And again, hopefully it'll be dry enough to play a game tomorrow night. The branding and marketing steering committee met this past week, and I know, Ms. Thompson, I think you were part of that committee, but, but it was a mixture of teachers and administrators, board member, myself, TAs, just a really broad range of people that came together to talk through the, the initial start of the branding process. And CISO, who is the vendor that we're using for this, they actually had done a lot of surveys. And I think the board actually participated as a group as well with CISO in getting some information about, you know, what Darlington County is to the different user groups. I will say, it was really incredible seeing how they pulled the information together. And, and they pointed out like how things ran through. There was common themes and common threads that they picked up from every user group about the Darlington County School District. And for, for me, I was so proud to hear that, because it's not just one person or one group saying something. It literally is every group had common threads and comments about the district. You know, one of those words was innovative, that, that just came out of every user group, was innovative. And, and so, you know, the consultant said, well, what is that? What is innovative, you know, to the steering committee? And we talked through a lot of those different things. But just, again, a great experience, and looking forward to their continued efforts as we work through this process. Hopefully, by the beginning of the summertime, they will be finished and be able to present to the board their findings, and we can start taking some action on some of the things. But really exciting, I mean, really exciting to, to see an outside group pull all this stuff together and say, hey, here's what we see that's common across your district. So stay tuned. And then the last thing I did want to mention, and I know Ms. Douglas mentioned a little bit about this as far as the ADM, average daily membership. We've been having a lot of these conversations internally. And more importantly, it's about absenteeism, and, and students that are enrolled in school but not in school. And this is something that, that is an issue nationally. It's some, it's an issue in the state of South Carolina, it's an issue in Darlington County, and it affects our funding. So this is just, you know, a plea to our, our parents and our guardians of our students that if, if they're not with us, we can't help them. And so we got to have our students in school. And there, there is just, unfortunately, you know, chronic absenteeism is described as when a student has missed more than 10% of the day, of the instructional days, they should be in school. And so, you know, for the first 10 days of school, if you miss a day of school, that's, you're chronic, you're chronically absent, right? That's 10%. Well, as the year goes along, it gets, you know, it gets worse. And we can't help our students be successful if they're not with us. And so we're doing everything we can when they're with us. Our teachers are doing such a great job, our staff, schools, principals, everybody's doing the best they can to help our students. But if they're not, if they're not in school, we can't help them. And so I just really, as we have talked about ADM and the impact on our district from a funding standpoint, if they're enrolled but they're not in school, we lose money. And so, but more importantly, we, we can't help our students if they're not with us. So I, I know everybody I'm sitting in this room with is on board with this, but I just feel like that I have to put that message out to everybody online, and that maybe we'll watch this board meeting is, help us help our kids be in school so we can help them be successful. And speaking of success, on that note, I'm focused on the student success part of our strategic plan goal areas. Bay Road Elementary, classrooms were selected to host the morning announcements, and each day, they broadcast them from a different classroom. So they rotate around the school, giving kids an opportunity to participate in their newscast. At Brockington Elementary, they had their 5th graders participating in Career Time Tuesday, and students heard from several individuals in the fields of hospitality, tourism, and human services. Our DCIT students are prepping for HOSA, DECA, and Skills USA competitions that are taking place this month. Darlington High School, their boys' basketball team made it to round one, and girls' basketball made it to round two. Congratulations for Darlington High School's basketball teams, being the only teams that were able to do that in the district. We had Hartsfield High School, where five students, as you heard, participated in all-region band concert. Eight band members attended the USC Band Clinic. They had two IB Biology and two IB Chemistry students who attended the annual Department of Defense Junior Symposium for Humanities and Science. And I also once, wanted to mention a familiar name, Jackson Chavis was the state champion again in the 285 heavyweight pound for wrestling. Hartsfield Middle School was the academic challenge, their academic challenge team finished the season undefeated and Division One champions. They're actually going to state for academic challenge. Lamar High School, they had a freshman, Noah Hatchell, who is the first and only state qualifier for 1A state championship in his weight class in wrestling. Lamar Spalding Elementary had Karis G, a 3rd grader, who won second place at the SCFA Eastern Region Youth Art Exhibit. I know that acronym, I, I will have to find out what the AFA is. It's South Carolina Artist and then something. But anyways, congratulations to Karis G on that one. Mayo High School, their South Carolina Senior Beta Convention. Mayo Betas earned 12 accolades, and most notably, including the South Carolina Senior State Beta Club Vice President, Kayden Baker. Congratulations to Kayden for that. North Hartsfield Elementary School, Mrs. Lyman's 5th grader shared their love each year on Valentine's Day with a special writing about anyone that they're thankful for. And the best part, of course, is delivering that to those folks that they're thankful for. Pate Elementary School had, innovation is thriving at Pate. 2nd grade and 4K students have been buddy reading and tackling STEM challenges aligned to standards, fostering collaboration and critical thinking. So again, it's the 2nd graders that are buddy reading with their 4K peers in the school. Spalding Middle School has been participating in kindness initiatives that exemplify the school's spirit of kindness, been demonstrating their kindness by posting positive thoughts on posters around the school and completing good deeds in the kindness challenge. St. John's, their families enjoyed the annual daddy-daughter dance, sponsored by their APT. Again, I saw pictures of that, that's, that's a great event that they have every year. Thornwell School for the Arts, their students partake in several opportunities to enhance their knowledge, including the Columbia Jazz Outreach Program, a trip to the ballet, and an opportunity to tour DCIT. So our Thornwell students had a chance to attend DCIT. So lots of various ways for student success. Again, it's academics, but it's also athletics, it's band, it's extracurricular activities. Any way that our students can be successful, we're always excited to tout that for all of our students. Chair Hasler, that is everything for my superintendent's update.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Dr. Newman? Do you want to lead us off on our board member input?
Well, I have a question. And, oh, shoot. I went to, and I might say it was a very, very good Black History program at Darlington High School last week. Kids did a fantastic job. And I give kudos to whoever it was that worked with the choreography and all of that other stuff. But after it was over, I was kind of taken aback, I was thrown off guard, because, you know, parents will come and share things with you, thinking that you, if you're on the school board, you know it all, or you should know what's going on. And this was something brand new to me. Do we have a policy for police entry into a school? And I ask you that because several of the people there said that an incident occurred where the policeman came into the school, actually went in the classroom, handcuffed the student, and walked them down the hallway where his other peers could see him. And now he's embarrassed and doesn't want to go back to school. Now, if he were my child, I would really have an issue with it, being a parent. My question is, is there a policy about something like that? Or could the child not have been called to the office, and then the police handcuff him from the office and take him out? It was very concerning to me. That's why I want to know, do we have a policy?
There's a lot of layers to what you just said. So first and foremost, there's not a policy in school board's policy manual. Law enforcement is separate from the school district. And so, you know, we, we cannot tell law enforcement what to do or what not to do. That, that is not, we're just, we're not allowed to do that. And so saying whether law enforcement could be in the building or not, that, that's not even something that a policy would be built around.
I mean, I guess, maybe the way the child was escorted out is my question.
Right. And, and Ms. Thompson?
Could it have been done without as much fanfare?
Yeah, Ms. Thompson, I think each situation, there's a lot of situations that involve law enforcement. And so I certainly, you know, each individual situation, we could look at and say, are there better ways to do things? For example, well, I don't want to give it for example, because there's a lot of things that happen that involve law enforcement with us. So, but are, can we always ask for ways to improve our relationships? Always. And, and our law enforcement folks actually have been very open to that with us. So I, I don't want to speak about an individual situation, because there's always specific circumstances to a situation, but I will say that any time that we have had circumstances to a situation, but I will say that any time that we have had concerns in the past and addressed them, they have been open to what we've said. Also knowing we may be able to suggest, but we, we cannot, we cannot tell them what to do or not to do. But it's in all of our best interest that we have a good relationship because it's about our kids, right? We need to take care of our kids. So I, I know I talked a lot, but I, I can't really speak specifically about an individual situation, but I absolutely understand the concern and, and again, would want what's best for our students.
Anything else? Thompson?
I just wanted to mention a couple of things. I got to participate in the branding and marketing committee last week, last Thursday. It was a half-a-day workshop type situation where they did all sorts of activities. It was a really diverse group of people, as you mentioned, which I loved because we had a administrative person from one of the elementary schools, we had teaching assistants, we had teachers, we had administration folks, we had principals, we had myself, just all sorts of different kinds of people from the district. Now, and they said specifically, they did do some working, some focus groups, thank you, with other groups outside of the, the district. But because it's branding, they wanted it to be an internal group of folks that actually did this workshop. But they did work with other people outside of the community and get information from other groups. But anyway, it was just a great experience. It was so nice. You could not leave that four hours of time together not feeling inspired. It was amazing to me how aligned everybody in the district was. I'm always impressed by how professional people are in our district, but they were very well-aligned. And the thing that really stood out through the common thread, I would say one of the main common threads, at least that jumped out at me, was that our adults in, throughout the district, want what's best for our kids. They want to provide opportunities for every child and to make sure every child can be successful. And I, I said to Dr. Newman at the end, I was like, so, this, these people were handpicked to be here, but do you think really that this like permeates our district? And he said, yes. And then I asked a couple of other people that I've run into that were on that committee since then, I asked them the same question, and they all say, yes. Like, of course, there's a few employees here and there that maybe aren't that into it, but that overall, that everybody that they know in this district really wants what's best for kids. And it was just heartwarming and wonderful session. So thank you for including me. And I can share more details with the board as well at sometime, sometime, and I'm sure you'll be getting more information as well. But it was a really great session, really well-done, and I, I'm excited about where we can go to promote the, the district and share all the good stuff that we're doing. And the other thing that I've been participating in recently that was the Workforce Development Strategic Team, they met today, this afternoon, and again, really great initiative, very excited about, there's, things are going so well with our internship program, ASCEND, now the Tuesday morning, Career Time Tuesday, that they're talking about what's next. You know, things are going really well there. You know, of course, we can always grow and keep, keep going there, but they're, now they're saying, okay, how else can we, what else do we need to be doing? And so, just, again, a really exciting initiative, and I'm really grateful to be a part of, and just wanted to shout out both of those groups because they're both have students' best interest in mind, providing students with opportunities, giving kids opportunity to be successful, and, and continuous improving, continuously improving and making our district better. So I just wanted to make sure that both of those groups got some, some time today. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. K.
I see Mr. Leonard back here. He is no longer interim principal, he is now a permanent principal at Lamar High. And I understand that our academic challenge team did pretty well the other day. We didn't, I don't think we won, but we made a really good showing, right? Proud of, proud of that. It's always good when academics are, not gonna say who we beat, but that's okay. Yes, sir. How are we on vacancies now?
We're still holding steady in that 12 right now. We're getting closer and closer to that time where it's difficult for me to even answer that question, day in, day out. Resignations, retirements are coming in. At the same time, principals are recommending new hires for next year.
Looking pretty good for next year, don't you think?
Oh, yes, sir. Contracts will go out the first week in April and be due back May 12th, and we'll have a solid picture for next year. But yes, sir, we're in really good shape.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Corrigan?
I don't have any.
Ms. Ford?
I just want to reiterate what Dr. Newman said about the absenteeism. And I want every parent, community group, church, please get involved in young people's lives because absenteeism is, is probably starting at the elementary school level. And so I'm asking that we be concerned about our young people that are not attending school because if they are not attending school, we can, we cannot educate them. And they will not be able to survive in this world without education. So if you know a young person that's not attending school, please try to reach out to them and try to talk with them, the parents. We need these children in school. We need them in school because not walking around up and down the street because you know what can happen. They might fall into some type of trouble. So we need to get our children back in school. That is a community effort that we all need to take a part in. And I also want to say, I did attend the Black History programs. I went to Ms. Brown, beautiful program, got to meet Colonel Christopher Williamson, and I went to Ms., Dr. Leonard, I went to your program. I don't know if you knew I was there. I enjoy your program. And I went to Ms. Gerke, and Ms. Gerke, I'm telling you, those are some very talented young people. It was just like a Broadway production. I would have paid that, to see that on Broadway.
I told him I would love to see them be able to get to a point where they can do a night show.
Oh, yeah. That, I mean, that was absolutely amazing. I mean, it, so much talent in our schools. And we have so much, so many talented young people. All the honors that were given tonight, you know, wrestling, whatever, Dr. Johnson went in a, a band, marching band, and I'm just so happy that we have all these terrific, smart, talented young people in this district. And I just want to make sure we get some more of them in, in here so we can keep doing great things for this, for this school district. And what else I wanted to talk about? Oh, the art show Sunday. Please come, people in the community, please come. This, I've seen some of the art that you won't believe coming from young people, elementary, junior high, and these art teachers from different schools have taught these children some of the most amazing things you will ever see in art. I, I, I just, you know, some of that art is worth putting on exhibit to buy. That's just how good it is. So I'm just asking the community, come and support our young people, come and support the children for this art program because I, on Sunday, 3:00 to 5:00, Hartsfield High, Hartsfield Middle, please come, please come. If you're not doing anything, no game should be on, I don't think. But y'all come out and support these young people and see some of that beautiful art that they do. They have even do art in pencil. You won't believe it. You would not believe some of these, some of the most talented children. I think Lamar won last year. Did Lamar?
He won every year.
No, you didn't. Yes, you did win every year because Clarence DeVos is over there. So yes, you do. That's my nephew. I'm just gonna plug that in. But yes, y'all, y'all, you all, y'all come and support y'all young, our children. You know, we got to take care of the good. We got to support these young people. They're, they're doing great things, and let's support them. Darlington High, your, your basketball team, I, I support you. We didn't get as far as we got last year, but that's all right. We got a name on the book. So that's all I have to say. Let's just continue to do great things and work things out, and we'll get through everything.
Ms. Kell?
I just have a question. What, do we think, do we know at time tomorrow that we would know about the game deals?
As soon as we can make a call, I promise I will get it out to you guys.
Can you let us know?
I'll let you know. I would say by 3:30 at the latest, probably 3:00, 3:30.
I hope we'll know before then because we'll have to let the traveling team know.
Yes, right.
Who's coming?
It's me on this phone.
Um, yeah, obviously, I don't remember who to play with.
But it's not a chance.
Yeah, I'll make sure that I let the board know.
Okay, thank you.
Early enough to, if we're not going to be able to do that.
I just have a couple of things. One, Ms. Brock, come in and parent liaison from Thornwell School for the Arts, contact me and ask me to come, I guess, Read Across America Week. And so I went last week and read to a couple of second-grade classrooms, and they were very, very engaged, and it was just a delight to be there with those students. And there was one young man who he probably knows more about dinosaurs than, I mean, I could ever even hope to know, but I just appreciated the invitation, and it was a delight to be able to go and read to those students. And they were just very, very engaged. And second of all, we always talk about how Darlington County, we are, it's a community, it's family, and I want to kind of give a shout-out to Mayo High School. They are currently hosting a chicken bog this coming Friday for one of their own who's going through some health issues. And so, if you have the opportunity to go and support that, it just is just another example of how we are family and reach out to each other and take care of each other. So thank you from Mayo High School for the work that you're doing there, for, for your fellow teachers and staff. And that's all I have. So that brings us to our personnel issues, actions here. I'll take a motion to approve those personnel actions.
I'll make a motion that we approve the personnel actions.
I get a second. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And now it looks like we need an executive session for personnel matters and contractual matters. I get a motion for that.
Yep. So I'll make a motion that we move into executive session, this is personnel issues and contractual matters.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And we'll move into executive session. And all in favor? Anyone opposed? And we'll move into executive session.
We good? I will entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
I move that we return to regular session from executive session.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I'll accept any motions that coming out of executive session.
Yes, Madam Chairman, I make a motion to accept the administration's recommendation to report a breach of contract issue to the State Board for the appropriate personnel action.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No other actions nor other votes were taken during executive session, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
You are adjourned.